Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for June 3, 2019. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for June 3, 2019. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for June 3, 2019. This is our regular meeting. This is our regular meeting. This is our regular meeting. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please? And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please? And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I would. I would. I would. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Sorry. Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Bradford.
Here. Here. Here.
Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Burton.
Here. Here. Here.
Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers.
Here. Here. Here.
Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Frank.
Here. Here.
Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Here. Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. Mrs. Bonnefield is here. Mrs. Jarvis. President Johnson. President Johnson.
Here.
Here. Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum.
President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Here. And Mrs. Frank, would you lead us in the pledge tonight? And Mrs. Frank, would you lead us in the pledge tonight? We have a quorum. Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
And Mrs. Frank, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Yes, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. with liberty and justice for all. with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. Again, good evening. Again, good evening. For those of you who are in the audience and you would like to follow along with our agenda, For those of you who are in the audience and you would like to follow along with our agenda, For those of you who are in the audience and you would like to follow along with our agenda, you can step outside the left-hand door and turn to the right. you can step outside the left-hand door and turn to the right. you can step outside the left-hand door and turn to the right. And we have agendas. And we have agendas. And we have agendas. We also have blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board tonight. We also have blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board tonight. We also have blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board tonight. For those of you at home that want to follow along, you can go to our website, For those of you at home that want to follow along, you can go to our website, For those of you at home that want to follow along, you can go to our website, lavonypublicschools.org. 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 Highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agendas, Highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agendas, Highlight over the Board tab and you will see the agendas and you can drop down and follow along with us. and you can drop down and follow along with us. and you can drop down and follow along with us. Again, this is our regular meeting, what we call a voting meeting. Again, this is our regular meeting, what we call a voting meeting. Again, this is our regular meeting, what we call a voting meeting. And most of the time, you won't hear a lot of discussion on the items tonight. And most of the time, you won't hear a lot of discussion on the items tonight. And most of the time, you won't hear a lot of discussion on the items tonight. This is generally the third time that these items have been presented to the board. This is generally the third time that these items have been presented to the board. This is generally the third time that these items have been presented to the board. If you really want to get into listening to the discussion and questions, If you really want to get into listening to the discussion and questions, If you really want to get into listening to the discussion and questions, I invite you to tune into our Committee of the Whole meetings I invite you to tune into our Committee of the Whole meetings I invite you to tune into our committee of the whole meetings because that's where we spend a lot more time because that's where we spend a lot more time on each of the issues. because that's where we spend a lot more time on each of the issues. on each of the issues. One of the things that has become my habit as Board President is I like to recite One of the things that has become my habit as Board President is I like to recite what our district climate goal is. One of the things that has become my habit as Board President is I like to recite what our district climate goal is. what our district climate goal is. And that says that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment And that says that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment And that says that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another. where both students and adults respect and value one another. where both students and adults respect and value one another. We, as the board members, feel that it is an obligation of ours to set the tone We, as the board members, feel that it is an obligation of ours to set the tone We, as the board members, feel that it is an obligation of ours to set the tone and to give the example to our community and to our students on what that really means. and to give the example to our community and to our students on what that really means. and to give the example to our community and to our students on what that really means. And that means respect amongst all of us, between student to student, teacher to teacher, And that means respect amongst all of us, between student to student, teacher to teacher, And that means respect amongst all of us, between student to student, teacher to teacher, adult to adult, student to teacher. adult to adult, student to teacher. adult to adult, student to teacher. And we live by that on the board. And we live by that on the board. And we live by that on the board. As I've said many times, we don't always agree on the items that come before the board, As I've said many times, we don't always agree on the items that come before the board, As I've said many times, we don't always agree on the items that come before the board, but we have respectful discussion, we respect each other's position, and we generally come to a consensus. but we have respectful discussion, we respect each other's position, but we have respectful discussion, we respect each other's position, and we generally come to a consensus. and we generally come to a consensus. It's too bad that some of our legislators can't do that. It's too bad that some of our legislators can't do that. It's too bad that some of our legislators can't do that. But we do it here on the board and we want to set an example for our community. But we do it here on the board, and we want to set an example for our community. But we do it here on the board, and we want to set an example for our community. So with that, we will move on to item three, communications, and item eight is our points of pride. So with that, we will move on to item three, communications, and item eight is our points of pride. So with that, we will move on to item three, communications, and item eight is our points of pride. Good evening, Mrs. Jenkins. Good evening, Mrs. Jenkins. Good evening, Mrs. Jenkins.
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Oakwist. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Oakwist. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Oakwist. Tonight, we continue with our feature, our monthly feature known as our Points of Pride. Tonight, we continue with our feature, our monthly feature known as our Points of Pride. Tonight, we continue with our feature, our monthly feature known as our Points of Pride. As you know, we began including this feature on the regular board meeting agendas As you know, we began including this feature on the regular board meeting agendas As you know, we began including this feature on the regular board meeting agendas as a way to highlight the many special programs we offer in the school district. as a way to highlight the many special programs we offer in the school district. as a way to highlight the many special programs we offer in the school district. As the school year winds down, this is a great opportunity to reflect on the year As the school year winds down, this is a great opportunity to reflect on the year As the school year winds down, this is a great opportunity to reflect on the year and also prepare for the upcoming school year. and also prepare for the upcoming school year. and also prepare for the upcoming school year. Tonight, we're thrilled to invite Student Services Coordinator Beth Santor to the podium Tonight, we're thrilled to invite Student Services Coordinator Beth Santor Tonight, we're thrilled to invite Student Services Coordinator Beth Santor to the podium to share reflections and exciting updates to the podium to share reflections and exciting updates to share reflections and exciting updates that are happening with the Livonia Transition Program. that are happening with the Livonia Transition Program. that are happening with the Livonia Transition Program. Mrs. Santor will update us on a very special partnership we have with Embassy Suites Hotel Mrs. Santor will update us on a very special partnership we have with Embassy Suites Hotel Mrs. Santor will update us on a very special partnership we have with Embassy Suites Hotel called Project Search. called Project Search. called Project Search. And she will share information about a new partnership with St. Mary Mercy Hospital And she will share information about a new partnership with St. Mary Mercy Hospital And she will share information about a new partnership with St. Mary Mercy Hospital as well as Ward Church. as well as Ward Church. as well as Ward Church. All three partnerships will benefit our Livonia Transition Students All three partnerships will benefit our Livonia Transition Students All three partnerships will benefit our Livonia Transition Students who are ages eighteen to twenty-six and are working toward their certificate of completion who are ages eighteen to twenty-six and are working toward their certificate of completion who are ages eighteen to twenty-six and are working toward their certificate of completion from Livonia Public Schools. from Livonia Public Schools. from Livonia Public Schools. At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome Mrs. Santor At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome Mrs. Santor At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome Mrs. Santor to offer a recap and a preview to offer a recap and a preview on what is to come next school year in LTP and with Project Search. to offer a recap and a preview on what is to come next school year in LTP and with Project Search. on what is to come next school year in LTP and with Project Search. Mrs. Santor? Mrs. Santor? Mrs. Santor?
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello there. Hello there.
Thank you, Stacy, Superintendent Oakwist, members of the Cabinet and the board Thank you, Stacy, Superintendent Oakwist, members of the Cabinet and the board Thank you, Stacy, Superintendent Oakwist, members of the Cabinet and the board for this opportunity to highlight our community partnerships with our Livonia Transition Program or LTP. for this opportunity to highlight our community partnerships with our Livonia Transition Program or LTP. for this opportunity to highlight our community partnerships with our Livonia Transition Program or LTP. We know that success for our post-high school students depends on a community of people working together. We know that success for our post-high school students depends on a community of people working together. We know that success for our post-high school students depends on a community of people working together. The three businesses we're highlighting tonight are perfect examples of why we are stronger together. The three businesses we're highlighting tonight are perfect examples of why we are stronger together. The three businesses we're highlighting tonight are perfect examples of why we are stronger together. With that, I'm excited to update you on plans for the next school year. With that, I'm excited to update you on plans for the next school year. With that, I'm excited to update you on plans for the next school year. I want to start with the business that started Project Search in Livonia, Embassy Suites. I want to start with the business that started Project Search in Livonia, Embassy Suites. I want to start with the business that started Project Search in Livonia, Embassy Suites. Last year, it was our first year with any kind of satellite classroom, and it was a huge success. Last year, it was our first year with any kind of satellite classroom, and it was a huge success. Last year, it was our first year with any kind of satellite classroom, and it was a huge success. This year, we have continued our relationship with Embassy Suites in the form of a hybrid satellite class. This year, we have continued our relationship with Embassy Suites This year, we have continued our relationship with Embassy Suites in the form of a hybrid satellite class. in the form of a hybrid satellite class. That means that half of the class were students who were in Project Search and exiting this year, That means that half of the class were students who were in Project Search and exiting this year, That means that half of the class were students who were in Project Search and exiting this year, and the other half were LTP students who were at Embassy for their class and work skills time. and the other half were LTP students who were at Embassy for their class and work skills time. and the other half were LTP students who were at Embassy for their class and work skills time. It has been a very successful year for both programs. It has been a very successful year for both programs. It has been a very successful year for both programs. Embassy has continued to support our students with job skills, but also with employment. Embassy has continued to support our students with job skills, but also with employment. Embassy has continued to support our students with job skills, but also with employment. After hiring nine of our students last year at Embassy, this year they are hiring another four. After hiring nine of our students last year at Embassy, this year, they are hiring another four. After hiring nine of our students last year at Embassy, this year, they are hiring another four. That is thirteen students in two years who are employed by Embassy Suites. That is thirteen students in two years who are employed by Embassy Suites. That is thirteen students in two years who are employed by Embassy Suites. I also want to mention that the students they hired this year I also want to mention that the students they hired this year I also want to mention that the students they hired this year are a combination are a combination of LTP students who are participating in Project Search are a combination of LTP students who are participating in Project Search of LTP students who are participating in Project Search and some that were not, and some that were not, which is real dedication to our cause. and some that were not, which is real dedication to our cause. which is real dedication to our cause. Based on the success of this partnership, next year, we're continuing to have a satellite classroom at Embassy. Based on the success of this partnership, next year, we're continuing to have a satellite classroom at Embassy. Based on the success of this partnership, next year, we're continuing to have a satellite classroom at Embassy. I know that many of you remember when the general manager of Embassy Suites, I know that many of you remember when the General Manager of Embassy Suites, I know that many of you remember when the General Manager of Embassy Suites, Patrick Palmer, spoke at a past board meeting Patrick Palmer, spoke at a past board meeting Patrick Palmer, spoke at a past board meeting about his positive feelings about his positive feelings of his relationship with our school district about his positive feelings of his relationship with our school district of his relationship with our school district and especially our students. and especially our students. and especially our students. Unfortunately, Patrick could not join us, but Ryan Morgan and Nicole Pajoni are stepping in, Unfortunately, Patrick could not join us, but Ryan Morgan and Nicole Pajoni are stepping in, Unfortunately, Patrick could not join us, but Ryan Morgan and Nicole Pajoni are stepping in, and we would love to recognize and give them an opportunity to say a few words. and we would love to recognize and give them an opportunity to say a few words. and we would love to recognize and give them an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm Nicole Pajoni. I'm Nicole Pajoni. This is Ryan Morgan. This is Ryan Morgan. We are just so grateful to have the students with us. We are just so grateful to have the students with us. Hilton this year celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary, a hundred years in hospitality. Hilton this year celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary, a hundred years in hospitality. Some of your current and former students were there to celebrate with us. Some of your current and former students were there to celebrate with us. They truly are a part of our hotel. They truly are a part of our hotel. Our hoteler Hilton has a service statement that is gracious, engaging, and caring, Our hoteler Hilton has a service statement that is gracious, engaging, and caring, making a difference in the lives of others in ways both big and small. making a difference in the lives of others in ways both big and small. And your students certainly do that, with their hellos in the hallway And your students certainly do that, with their hellos in the hallway to really getting in and taking on projects. to really getting in and taking on projects. They have made the difference in our lives and it's such a pleasure to have them there. They have made the difference in our lives, and it's such a pleasure to have them there. So, thank you very much. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I actually want to add that I just got an email forwarded to me by somebody at Embassy I actually want to add that I just got an email forwarded to me by somebody at Embassy who already had positive comments from three of the four students that have already started there this year. who already had positive comments from three of the four students that have already started there this year. So that's really exciting. So that's really exciting. They're off to a good start. They're off to a good start.
Next, we want to highlight St. Mary's Hospital. Next, we want to highlight St. Mary's Hospital. This past year, St. Mary's has been one of our job sites for our LTP students. This past year, St. Mary's has been one of our job sites for our LTP students. The St. Mary's community welcomed us with open arms The St. Mary's community welcomed us with open arms and have provided our students with unique but transferable job skills and have provided our students with unique but transferable job skills related to the hospital setting. related to the hospital setting. They have consistently and constantly let me know how much they love having our LPS students They have consistently and constantly let me know how much they love having our LPS students as part of their community. as part of their community. About six months ago, St. Mary's let us know that they would be very interested About six months ago, St. Mary's let us know that they would be very interested in deepening our relationship and hosting a Project Search site in deepening our relationship and hosting a Project Search site for the 2019-2020 school year. for the 2019-2020 school year. That interest is going to be a reality, and we're excited to start on this new venture That interest is going to be a reality, and we're excited to start on this new venture and see what happens next. and see what happens next. I want to point out that some of our Project Search students who will be at St. Mary's I want to point out that some of our Project Search students who will be at St. Mary's wanted to sign up because they were there this year as part of their work skills, wanted to sign up because they were there this year as part of their work skills, and so they were excited to have more. and so they were excited to have more. With that, I would love to have Laura Vodas come up and be recognized and say a few words. With that, I would love to have Laura Vodas come up and be recognized and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura, and I serve as the Manager of Business Development at St. Mary's. My name is Laura, and I serve as the Manager of Business Development at St. Mary's. And when I speak, I really do speak on behalf of everyone at St. Mary's And when I speak, I really do speak on behalf of everyone at St. Mary's that we have truly enjoyed having the students at the hospital this year. that we have truly enjoyed having the students at the hospital this year. They have just been a smiling presence. They have just been a smiling presence. They've really not just enriched the lives for our patients They've really not just enriched the lives for our patients because many of them have interacted with patients, but also for our staff members as well. because many of them have interacted with patients, but also for our staff members as well. And as Beth alluded to, we are making the transition And as Beth alluded to, we are making the transition to go from being a Livonia Transition Program site to go from being a Livonia Transition Program site to a Project Search site. to a Project Search site. And it was really not even a question at all when I took it to our administration. And it was really not even a question at all when I took it to our administration. And I said, "I've already had so many questions from our directors this year And I said, "I've already had so many questions from our directors this year if they could hire the students if they could hire the students just because they love them so much." just because they love them so much." And they've been so disappointed to know that it's like, "Wait, do you mean they're not in summer school? And they've been so disappointed to know that it's like, "Wait, do you mean they're not in summer school? They can't stay all year round?" They can't stay all year round?" They truly do enjoy having the students. They truly do enjoy having the students. They've really taken them under their wing. They've really taken them under their wing. They really do see them as just another member of their department. They really do see them as just another member of their department. So I am really proud to have helped bring this program to St. Mary's So I am really proud to have helped bring this program to St. Mary's and want to thank all of you for this opportunity. and want to thank all of you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. So finally, we have our newest addition to our LPS community partnership in Ward Presbyterian Church. So finally, we have our newest addition to our LPS community partnership in Ward Presbyterian Church. Ward Presbyterian currently supports students and young adults with disabilities Ward Presbyterian currently supports students and young adults with disabilities with a number of programs, including one run by our Livonia paraprofessional, Sheri Kozmowski. with a number of programs, including one run by our Livonia paraprofessional, Sheri Kozmowski. Initially, we considered Ward only as a possible job site for our LTP students. Initially, we considered Ward only as a possible job site for our LTP students. However, as we toured the facility, we quickly saw that there were opportunities However, as we toured the facility, we quickly saw that there were opportunities for diverse work skills as well as some unique classroom-based learning. for diverse work skills as well as some unique classroom-based learning. At that point, we began exploring the possibility of moving one of our classrooms to Ward At that point, we began exploring the possibility of moving one of our classrooms to Ward as a satellite location. as a satellite location. We're excited to announce that the classroom piece of our Students' Day We're excited to announce that the classroom piece of our Students' Day will have a culinary focus using standards and skills will have a culinary focus using standards and skills that are currently being utilized in other culinary programs. that are currently being utilized in other culinary programs. So it's going to add a nice, unique component to our programs. So it's going to add a nice, unique component to our programs. This includes our students providing the scones, muffins, and cookies This includes our students providing the scones, muffins, and cookies for Ward's coffee shop called Renew. for Ward's coffee shop called Renew. And there's more. And there's more. For the work skills part of the day, students will be trained in the following areas: For the work skills part of the day, students will be trained in the following areas: custodial, clerical, retail, and classroom prep. custodial, clerical, retail, and classroom prep. We're excited and we're ready to go. We're excited and we're ready to go. Before inviting our guests to come forward, I wanted to make sure to recognize John Nowacki, Before inviting our guests to come forward, I wanted to make sure to recognize John Nowacki, who's the Director of our Campus Services. who's the Director of our Campus Services. John has put much time and effort with working out the details for this very unique classroom. John has put much time and effort with working out the details for this very unique classroom. John couldn't be here tonight, but we have three wonderful representatives who are able to join us. John couldn't be here tonight, but we have three wonderful representatives who are able to join us. At this time, I would like to invite Tyler Graff, the Executive Pastor, At this time, I would like to invite Tyler Graff, the Executive Pastor, Sheri Kozmowski, and Matt Bone, who work for Ward. Sheri Kozmowski, and Matt Bone, who work for Ward. And by the way, Matt is a former Churchill Charger. And by the way, Matt is a former Churchill Charger.
Well, good evening, everyone. Well, good evening, everyone. Great to be with you tonight. Great to be with you tonight. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you for the invitation. I'm Tyler Graff. I'm Tyler Graff. I'm the Executive Pastor at Ward Church. I'm the Executive Pastor at Ward Church. And when this opportunity has kind of been in the works through a couple of years for us, And when this opportunity has kind of been in the works through a couple of years for us, through many different streams, one of the things about it was last year, through many different streams, one of the things about it was last year, we followed a family in our church. we followed a family in our church. And one of the things that this family said about coming into our church, And one of the things that this family said about coming into our church, this line that's kind of stuck with me is this line of, you know, "God is the ultimate incluter." this line that's kind of stuck with me is this line of, you know, "God is the ultimate incluter." And that really is a heartbeat for our church. And that really is a heartbeat for our church. And as we've gotten involved more and more through the years, And as we've gotten involved more and more through the years, and now this opportunity with your students, and now this opportunity with your students, I think they're going to feel like our students I think they're going to feel like our students by the fall when they arrive. by the fall when they arrive. But it's a real joy and excitement for us to be a part of this. But it's a real joy and excitement for us to be a part of this. For us, it's one of those situations, particularly with that line, "God is the great includer." For us, it's one of those situations, particularly with that line, "God is the great incluter." How can we not be involved? How can we not be involved? That's our response. That's our response. How can we not be involved with such a great opportunity to come alongside them How can we not be involved with such a great opportunity to come alongside them and to be a part of what the future could hold in their lives? and to be a part of what the future could hold in their lives? And so we just really appreciate that opportunity And so we just really appreciate that opportunity and thank you so much and thank you so much for allowing us the privilege to be a part of their lives. for allowing us the privilege to be a part of their lives.
Thank you. Thank you. So you can see why it's such a joy to work with our partners. So you can see why it's such a joy to work with our partners. To close the presentation, we wanted to show our video To close the presentation, we wanted to show our video that was our students' thank you to Embassy Suites at the Project Search graduation. that was our students' thank you to Embassy Suites at the Project Search graduation.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be with you tonight. Thank you for the invitation. I'm Tyler Graff. I'm the executive pastor at Ward Church. And when this opportunity has kind of been in the works through a couple of years for us, through many different streams, one of the things about it was last year, we followed a family in our church. And one of the things that this family said about coming into our church, this line that's kind of stuck with me is this line of, you know, "God is the ultimate includer." And that really is a heartbeat for our church. And as we've gotten involved more and more through the years and now this opportunity with your students, I think they're going to feel like our students by the fall when they arrive. But it's a real joy and excitement for us to be a part of this. For us, it's one of those situations, particularly with that line, "God is the great includer." How can we not be involved? That's our response. How can we not be involved with such a great opportunity to come alongside them and to be a part of what the future could hold in their lives? And so, we just really appreciate that opportunity and thank you so much for allowing us the privilege to be a part of their lives.
So, you can see why it's such a joy to work with our partners. To close the presentation, we wanted to show our video that was our students' thank you to Embassy Suites at the Project Search graduation. [Music]
Hello, my name is Maggie Fennick. I can thank you all of the guys for Appreciation Day. Thank you for doing the hard work and housekeeping. I use a bat. I use a bat to clean the whole guest room. I work hard to clean the railings on the bed floor. I can thank you guys for me fitting in for the job. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zach. And over the past year, I've been an intern here at Embassy Suites through Project Search and stuff. Over the past year, it's been great. I've learned a lot of new skills like making omelets, doing dishes. I learned how to make different recipes like pico and coleslaw. And I also learned how to stock a gift shop, make welcome bags, send messages with kids. And I'd like to thank everyone who trained me along the way, like Chef Sonia DiMario, Nate, Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone at Embassy Suites that taught me to be a better person. All right. I'm sure to Lumi, she's a very wonderful person that I have worked with in this Embassy Suites. She taught me a lot with folding towels and folding sheets. And she's just a nice and beautiful person to still work with. I'm thankful for this opportunity to everything and being here in Project Search and to the Embassy Suites staff. They taught me to do a lot here and it gave me an opportunity to get a really good experience and a good job. And thank you for everybody that joined me here. I'm so happy for everybody to support me and my family, my friends, and plus the teachers that, like Ms. Canal, she's a cool teacher. I like to see Ms. Rudy cheer me on with my work. Thank you, everyone.
Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Our family is thrilled and honored to know one of the students that was hired by Embassy Suites. They are so thrilled. The student is so thrilled, so proud of her job. She's getting up early like all the rest of the workforce. Yeah, I know, I'm doing that too. And not only is she serving at Embassy Suites, but bringing home some of her work skills. If I'm not mistaken, her phrase at home now is, "It's my pleasure." Which is something that she's gotten her family into responding with. So, it's just really cool. Not only does it affect the student, but the family and the ripple effect right into our community. So, thank you for all of, all three organizations for what you're offering our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions? Mr. Centers?
Our family too has a connection with one of the students and we've seen tremendous
8E, authorization to accept resignations.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That will then move us down to item 6B, approval to purchase World Language Level 2 textbooks. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District purchase the following World Language textbooks for a total cost of $130,988.77, with $49,897.24 in complimentary materials. The textbook, Te Bronche, 2019, for French II courses from EMC School, at a cost of The textbook, Portfolio Deutsch, 2015, for German II courses from Klett Langenschite, at a cost of $25,853.78. The textbook, Authentico B, 2018, for Spanish II courses, from Pearson Education, Inc., at a cost of $50,698.74.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, isn't it? And I think Mrs. O'Brien is going to help us with this. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, President Johnson. Over the past year, Mr. Matt Miga, our World Language Teacher Leader, has worked with a team of 10 World Language teachers representing all three high schools and two of our middle schools to evaluate their Level 2 curriculum, research best practices for language acquisition, and create a vision for teaching and learning. Once they had their vision in place, they evaluated the new materials we purchased last year for Level 1 World Languages. As the committee was mostly made up of teachers who were part of the Level 1 adoption, the committee valued the experiences and insights those teachers were having as they made their decisions. The committee determined that the best situation would be one in which each language adopted a series for Level 1 and 2. The concepts would flow coherently, and there would be less gaps in the content. All three publishers will be providing a textbook and an eight-year digital license for each student. The quotes represent a bundling where we purchase the textbook or the license, and the other is complimentary, or their prices are bundled together when you purchase both. There's no cost savings to purchase one or the other separately. We have found that our students like having both the digital version and the textbooks themselves, based on their learning needs. So the total cost for World Languages Level 2, French, German, and Spanish, is $130,988.77, with $49,897.24 in complimentary materials. The money has been budgeted in the secondary textbook budget, which has been supported by the Wayne County Enhancement Village money.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton.
I'd just like to thank our community, and our county community at large. As you mentioned at the very end, this is supported by our Wayne County Enhancement Village. This is one of those types of items that we can purchase that has been needed for some time, and it had to go on hold during our extremely difficult financial period that we are finally beginning to emerge from. But with the support of the Wayne County Enhancement Village, we really owe an enormous thank you to our community. That's what's allowed us to make this purchase at this time, and it'll benefit so many students. So thank you to our entire Wayne County community.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Pass along our thanks to Mr. Miga. I know that this is a lot of work to figure out which textbooks to purchase, and I'm glad that we're able to start to turn those over and get up to date on some of these.
I will let him know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval to purchase World Language Level 2 textbooks. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item 7, business matters, and item A is approval of bid results for boiler replacements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of new boilers at Holmes Middle School, Johnson Upper Elementary School, Hoover Elementary School, Kennedy Elementary School, and Hayes Elementary School from SIS Temp Corporation, Rochester Hills, Michigan, for a cost of $856,000 plus 5% contingency, in the amount of $42,800, for a total amount of $898,800.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis, good evening. You gonna help us with this item?
Good evening. This is a planned project based on the district's 10-year facilities plan. The current boilers are nearing their end of useful life and are in need of replacement. This will be a sinking fund project with a timeline for completing all buildings in the fall of 2019, prior to the heating season. The above-named buildings were chosen based on the condition of their boilers, and because the two middle schools are sister schools of Frost, whose boilers have recently been replaced. Kennedy and Hoover are also sister schools, which will help in the installation, because they would be similar-style projects. And finally, Hayes is just in great need of replacement with their boilers. I recommend this boiler replacement project for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
Along with these new systems, we are expecting to see some efficiencies with these. Mr. Francis, can you speak?
Yes, I mentioned the Frost Middle School project, which was recently completed. The boilers that are going to be replacing the current boilers in these buildings are a high-efficiency condensing boiler unit. They will reduce the amount of BT used, meaning the amount of gas that gets used. We have found, because we did pre- and post-testing at Frost, we found a great decrease in also electrical energy in the pumps and how they're being used. So we do expect also, while it may not be a cost-saving and environmental-saving, of a great reduction of CO2 as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Centers. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of results for boiler replacement. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson.
Yes, the motion carries. That takes us to item 7B, approval to purchase flexible furniture for Cleveland Elementary, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Cleveland Elementary School from Interior Environments for a total of $38,742.11.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Scott, good evening. You gonna help us with this one?
I am.
Thank you.
As was discussed at the May 28th Committee of the whole, Cleveland has worked with the Interior Environments to design areas in Cleveland that will provide some alternate options for students to use while they're working and while they're teaming together collaboratively on their work. The funds being utilized, again, are from the funds from the 2013 bond, which was made possible by our community. And again, we want to thank the community for this support. Areas impacted by Cleveland's design include a collaboration space, a small area in the library, and the hallways with some of those benches that our schools seem to love. The purchase totals, $38,742.11, which utilizes the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Discount Program. It's recommended that the board approve the flexible furniture purchase for Cleveland Elementary.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Scott, do we have additional schools that will be getting flexible furniture? Are we near the end now?
We have one more school, and that one will be coming next year.
Okay.
So all of our elementaries and our secondaries have received this Phase 3. Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval to purchase flexible furniture for Cleveland Elementary School, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That moves us to item 7C, approval to purchase computers for Livonia Career Technical Center grant funds. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of 27 HP single-unit computers with HP CarePak coverage for the Livonia Career Technical Center, as awarded through RMC Pricing to CDW-G, for a total expenditure of $59,913.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield.
Bradford.
I'm sorry. There are too many Bs.
We'll keep you going.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willemberg, will you help us with this, please?
I sure will, President Johnson. We're always looking to upgrade our technologies at the Career Tech Center, and as mentioned, this request is for 27 Hewlett-Packard single-unit computers in the HP CarePak that provides the hardware support and accidental breakage coverage for those computers. The request is targeting Mr. Hughes' computer repair and security course and the Internet Engineering course, whose classroom computers are at least five years old now. And this allows our programs to match college-level and industry-standard technologies. As mentioned, the product is reviewed through RMC Pricing, and CDWG was a selected provider. The total cost is for $59,913, and it fortunately comes from that added cost fund from the state, which means it does not come out of the district, the LPS budget. I recommend your support for this purchase of computers for the Livonia Career and Technical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Willemberg. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton.
Mr. Willemberg, we discussed this at the committee the whole meeting, but for the benefit of the public that may not have tuned in at that time, can you elaborate a little bit on what 61A means? We understand, but so for other folks.
The state of Michigan has special categorical funds for purchases for career technical centers, because those expenses are very hefty, if you will, to purchase a lot of high-speed computers and the tech equipment that normally comes with a career center, like lifts for vehicles and things like that, is a very expensive adventure. So the state sets aside extra money to help districts and ISDs to provide and make those programs viable and up-to-date, if you will.
And is this 61A money something that we receive every year?
Every year, yes.
Every year, okay. It must be utilized at the Career Technical Center for those.
That's correct. There's a lot of stipulations, but it's for those career center classes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to approve the purchase of computers for Livonia Career Technical Center. Mrs. Bonnefield?
I will. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you, that motion carries. That then takes us to Section 8, Personnel Matters, Item 8A, approval of collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Education Association, LEA. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract with the Livonia Education Association, whose agreement has been ratified by LEA members. Said contract shall continue through August 15, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Oakwest, are you going to lead this, or is it gonna be Mr. Archibald?
Mr. Archibald is going to kick us off, and then I will wrap us up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Oakwest, and Mr. Johnson. My remarks will be brief, as everyone involved with this process has probably heard enough from me over the past several months. No nodding of affirmation is necessary. It was a privilege for me to represent the Board of Education and the superintendent throughout this process. I'd seriously like to thank and commend both teams for the professionalism, for the positive attitude, and the collaborative spirit displayed throughout the bargaining process. While we sat on different sides of the table through bargaining, we are members of the same team and share a common bond in what best serves the interests of the district and our employees, and in this particular case, our teachers. So I am delighted to be bringing this here this evening for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you, President Johnson. I'd like to thank Mr. Archibald as our chief negotiator and our entire team, as well as the members of our Livonia Education Administration team as well. We had a very committed group of individuals who worked tirelessly over a number of weeks and a number of months to bring forth this agreement on behalf of the teachers we serve. We are very pleased to be bringing this recommendation to the board. We appreciate the board's guidance and support throughout this process. And again, we know there is no more important work being done than that being done in our schools each and every day. So we are very, very pleased to recommend this agreement to you, and proud of the work of both of the teams on this agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, the only comment that I would make, and as we've heard, you showed the respect. You showed the respect. That's what we live for. That's what we try and teach our children. So thank you both. So we have a motion for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools School District and the Livonia Education Association. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. And we're going to invite...
To invite the members of the team up to sign, please.
...up to sign the agreement?
Thank you.
Stretch your legs, come on up.
Let you start down at this end, and then we'll go through. Priscilla, nobody thought that at all.
Sure. Don't forget what you're saying. Congratulations, Doug.
Thank you, good job, guys. We're working together.
Congratulations.
Thank you, a herd of chicken and roasted potatoes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doug.
Great, thank you.
Nicole, glad to have you here.
Thank you so much.
For everything.
Are you doing good?
Congratulations, yes.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I know. Quickly find your...
Thank you, Priscilla.
I sent someone your way. You were the first person that called.
Thank you. Nicole, really, bring your microphone.
If you didn't know, you know who.
Thank you so much.
Yes, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, he did? Oh, he missed the big guy, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know she is.
You've got things you're doing.
She was there when I was-
Oh, you're kidding.
Hi.
Thank you.
You didn't.
Welcome aboard.
No, no, he's got one more here.
He's so strong.
First graders, that is a sweet, sweet spot.
Hi, Nicole, sorry, thank you very much.
I have a kindergartner, and I think that is like-
Thank you.
You guys are hard workers. So are you in middle school. Whoever wants to be an 11 and 12-year-old.
Oh, it's a-
13-year-old. Thank you so much.
Where do I sign?
Oh, where my name is.
What, you know?
Give me another pen.
Oh, yep.
Can we have that?
Oh, here, I got one.
Well, is that an official?
It's an official pen.
Is this an official one?
An official pen.
Oh, they got one. They got one.
Thank you again. They'll move us on to Item 8B, Recognition of 40-Year Employees. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the proposed resolution of appreciation for 40 years of full-time service with the district for the following employees. Frank Betsel, Trace Leach, Christian Nichols.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Archibald?
Just a couple of brief comments. 40 years is quite a testament to each of these individuals. I think it's a breed that we're going to continue to see less and less of, and I commend all three of these individuals for reaching this milestone, but also compliment their modesty in choosing not to be recognized in large fanfare tonight, and just humbly go about taking care of their business as well as they do each day. So, again, thanks to them and thanks to their service to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the Board?
Thank you.
Thank you, again. They'll move us on to Item 8B, Recognition of 40-Year Employees. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the proposed resolution of appreciation for 40 years of full-time service with the district for the following employees. Frank Betsel, Trace Leach, Christian Nichols.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Archibald?
Just a couple of brief comments. 40 years is quite a testament to each of these individuals. I think it's a breed that we're going to continue to see less and less of, and I commend all three of these individuals for reaching this milestone, but also compliment their modesty in choosing not to be recognized in large fanfare tonight, and just humbly go about taking care of their business as well as they do each day. So, again, thanks to them and thanks to their service to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the Board?
Thank you.
Thank you, that's incredible. It is incredible.
That's pretty amazing. Oh, Liz.
Mrs. Jarvis?
I just wanted to point out that those employees have been around longer than Mr. Centers has been alive.
That's true.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Centers?
About being alive still?
I kinda wish that was me, too.
Did you have something, Mrs.?
If I'm not mistaken, all three of these individuals are on our building support staff, and it makes me very, very thrilled that when we went through our leanest times in this district, these are positions that some districts outsourced, and we did not do that. As a district, we value very, very much the folks who deal with our students, not only in the classroom, but for the very first interaction of getting onto a bus in the morning and interacting with our building support staff, the entire staff all day long, and until we drop them off again at the end of the day. I'm just thrilled to pieces that we were able to keep these positions as part of truly our LPS team.
Yes, well said, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank, the recognition of 40-year employees. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I will. Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item 8C, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Susan Boggs, Angela Harris, Paul Leclerc, and Paula Roberson.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, and Mr. Archibald again.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we bring before you the names of four individuals who will be retiring. These individuals retire with a combined 91 years of experience with Livonia Public Schools, an average of 22.75 years. I would like to personally offer my sincere congratulations and ask that the Board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation and recognition for their years of dedication and service to the students of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Best wishes, thank you.
Yes. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, to adopt resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Items 8D and E were covered under our consent agenda, so we are at Item 8F, Sympathy Resolution for the Family of Jamie Callis, School-Aged Childcare Instructor. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Jamie Callis.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Bradford, would you like to read the resolution, please?
Yes. Whereas the Board of Education was saddened to hear of the untimely death of Jamie Callis, and whereas she was employed by the Livonia Public Schools School District as a school-age childcare instructor at Kennedy Elementary, beginning on October 20th, 2016, and whereas she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication to students, parents, and staff, and whereas Jamie Callis will be profoundly missed by her students, colleagues, and the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offers its deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Jamie Callis.
Already done. Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Archibald, do you have anything to add?
No additional comment, other than our condolences to Mrs. Callis's family, coworkers, and the Kennedy community.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any other comments, Mrs. Oakwest?
I just want to briefly, again, extend our deepest sympathies with the Callis family and thank Mrs. Callis for her work as a SAC instructor. Mrs. Burton, you were just talking about our folks who start the day and end the day with our students, and oftentimes, our students are very, very eager to get to their SAC classroom and oftentimes don't want to leave when they're ready to be picked up at the end of the day. And it's people like Mrs. Callis that help make these rooms a special and safe place for our students. So, we thank her for that, and our hearts are with her family.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept the sympathy resolution for Jamie Callis. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item 9 and 9A, Second Reading of Board-
Mr. Johnson, may I interrupt?
I'm sorry.
Just to make one additional comment that I meant to make prior Personnel Section. Just, we want to, I'm delighted to announce that we will not be bringing any K-12 teacher layoffs to the Board this year. That is exceptionally good news, and I'd like to thank the Director of Human Resources for his efforts with the building administration and coordinating that complicated puzzle. And, again, we are delighted not to be bringing any K-12 teaching position layoffs to the Board.
Thank you for that. Okay, now we'll move on to Item 9A, Second Reading of Board Policy, JLB Class Gifts to Schools. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JLB Class Gifts to Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and Mr. Willemberg, I believe, will help.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. Just as a reminder, the original policy was written in 1988, and through the last several meetings, we have massaged that language, pressed the refresh button, if you will, so it's a little more clear in its wording. I recommend your support of this two-sentence policy.
Thank you, Mr. Willemberg. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to adopt Board Policy JLB Class Gifts to Schools. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. That takes us to Item 9B, Second Reading for Removal of Board Policy JM Contest for Students. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and remove Board Policy JM Contest for Students.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, and Mr. Willemberg again.
And, again, thank you, President Johnson. Another policy written over 30 years ago, through the last several meetings, we have reviewed that language, have reviewed it with principles, and we've determined that the policy really has no meaning for us. It doesn't affect our day-to-day operations, and we recommend its removal. We do not, it's not a practical policy for us, we do not use it. I recommend your support to remove Policy JM.
Thank you, Mr. Willemberg. Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have, oh, I'm sorry, do we have one? Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Board for cleaning up the policy book, so that it seems like we're removing a lot of things or condensing a lot of things, but I think it makes it more effective and more efficient. And so, any of these things that we're removing is something that is covered in a different section of the book. So, it's not that we're just removing policies because they're no longer applicable, some of them are, but they're also covered in different areas. And so, it makes it much more user-friendly when it's more effective, and what's there is accurate. So, we're not just removing policies, it's covered in different areas. So, I think that's important for the community to know.
Yes, and we thank the Board for their leadership in that effort.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Sort of along that same line, there are actually two big binders full of policy, and it is a monumental task to go through those. So, the work that's put in by Cabinet to go through those policies and review them and revise them is a huge undertaking, and we sincerely thank you for all the efforts that you put in. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, to adopt Board Policy, actually, the removal of Board Policy JM Contest for Students. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. That takes us to Item 9C, Establishment of Dates for Organizational Meeting and First Regular Meeting for 2019-2020. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District hold its annual organizational meeting at 6:45 PM on Wednesday, July 24th, 2019, in the boardroom, 15125 Farmington Road, Livonia. Further, that a regular board meeting will be held directly following the organizational meeting and commencing at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Stereo. I heard Mrs. Jarvis. So, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Any questions or comments from the Board?
No.
No?